Please stand for the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks for coming, everybody. Summer is here, and then some. Roll call, please.
Sandy Kufa.
Here.
Crystal Regan.
Here.
Kristy Hilton.
Here.
Artie Bryson.
Here.
Cindy Valentine.
Here.
Joanne Shurkey.
Here.
Mark Burchard.
Here.
Okay, we're all present and accounted for. First, we have a couple of public hearings to do. First one is a public hearing on our 2018-19 budget. I will entertain a motion to open up the public hearing.
Make a motion to open the public hearing for the 2018-19 budget.
Support. Motion is support. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion passes.
At seven o'clock.
Seven o'clock. We can open it up if anyone has any public comments about our proposed 18-19 budget. You can come up forward. I can give you a quick rundown. Basically, with all the departments and throughout the whole township, which we have 31 of them, believe it or not, our total budget is $10,297,834. And with this proposed budget, out of that, we're forecasting to put over $400,000 back in the fund balance dispersed between all the different departments. So that's it in a nutshell. Any public comments on anything? Hearing none. Entertained a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing for the 2018-19 budget at 7:01.
Support.
Motion is support. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Okay, motion carries. Next, we have a public hearing on Lazy Lane. Special assessment. I will entertain a motion.
Make a motion at 7:02 to open the public hearing for Lazy Lane.
Support.
Yeah, motion is support. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone who gets. Motion carries. Is that rain out there?
Yes.
Okay, I'd like to... Anyone has any questions about the Lazy Lane special assessment? Basically, it's for road maintenance, and what is it, 3,000 a year? Yeah. And it's for three or five, five years, and they're going to use the money for maintaining road plowing and putting gravel down if needed, so. Anyone here for Lazy Lane? Come on up and state your name and... How's it going?
Good, Artie.
Good.
Jim Hanson and my wife and I have taken over the duties of road maintenance for Lazy Lane. The previous person that had done it had passed away, and her daughter had moved out of town, so we're designated. Our alternate will be Kurt Stump, and the amount of the assessment is a little higher than last year because we were always out of money. In fact, we have a bill outstanding right now that can't be paid with the balance in there, so. There's no questions. That's all I had.
Okay. Thank you. No? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for stepping up, too. Any more public comments on Lazy Lane? Hearing none. Entertained a motion to close the public hearing.
Make a motion to close the public hearing at?
7:04. 7:04.
Support.
Motion is support. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Motion carries. Next, we have bills payable. Entertained a motion to pay some bills.
I'll make a motion for bills payable in the amount of $135,526.46.
Support.
Yeah, motion and support. Any discussion, questions? Nope. Nope. Roll call vote.
Crystal Regan.
Yes.
Kristy Hilton.
Yes.
Artie Bryson.
Yes.
Cindy Valentine.
Yes.
Joanne Shurkey.
Yes.
Mark Burchard.
Yes.
Sandy Kufa.
Yes.
Okay, motion passes. Moving right along. Now, we have public comments. Any public comments on anything? Want to talk smack about the clerk? You can. Parents.
I'm sorry?
It's okay. No public comments. Okay. Next, we have the consent agenda.
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda consisting of the board meeting minutes of June 4, 2018, and synapses, check reports, building and zoning reports, code enforcement report, a notice that in observance of the 4th of July, the offices will be closed July 4th and 5th, and the weekly road watch communication from the county.
Support.
Motion is support. We, everyone good with the consent agenda?
We're going to include assessing in the reports, right?
Yes.
Okay. I don't know if, I didn't hear that, or... Okay.
Okay. All in favor of the consent agenda is on the agenda. Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Motion carries. All right, next, it's the supervisor's report. And let's see. It's been busy. Colony water main project. Bids went out Friday, and we're going to open the bids. It's about $1.5, $1.4 million water main replacement project on the Colony Road, and we're going to basically hook onto where it is on M29 and go under the canal and tie it in at the end of Anchor Bay Drive. And it's a special assessment. They'll all be paid for it. Right now, it's a private water line, and once it's brought up to snuff and we're putting fire hydrants in, we get turned over to the municipal, you know, the township's water system. But, so everyone knows, bids are due back July 10, and we'll award it on or before July 16. And it has a start date. It can start anytime in August with completion by November 9, before deer hunting season. Okay. I'm happy to say the firefighters ratified their, the Michigan Association of Firefighters Union contract, and that's on our agenda, so I'll leave the rest for that. On June 13, last week, I presented to the DNR Trust Fund Grant Fund Board for a road grant for the DNR Trust Fund to help us purchase. They'll purchase 75% of property. For, it's property vacant land on the Crispin Blue Way Trail, the Crispin Drain, and we're going to buy it with the intention of doing kayak and launch and a bike trailhead park. It's going to have a nature walk, observation tower, and handicap kayak launch. Presented to them, and it went very, very well. They did all but say it funded it there. They basically said it was going to be funded. But, an interesting side note on that, I actually got to, I sat next to Kurt Seidel. He's the director of MDOT. And we had about a half hour, very candid conversation about bike trails and bike paths, about getting some bike paths along M29 and on IM154 on the island. And so, he gave me a lot of good information, helpful information, and contacts with that. And keep going forward with the property on the DNR Trust Fund. June 25, Monday, we're having an onsite walk with a couple of their grant coordinators on the property. I'll meet them there a week from today on Monday at noon, and we'll walk the property with them so they can see it. And then, also, just this Wednesday, I'm attending Semcog University Seminar, day-long seminar, Designing Bicycle Friendly Roadways. It's going to be downtown Detroit, and I'm looking forward to that meeting. We are going to, we don't know the exact date yet, but we're going to have an open house for our fire department on the Island Station. We were looking at July 14, but, and do it right after their homeowners association meeting, but that, they rescheduled that meeting because of conflicts with their car show. We're either going to do it on Wednesday night or Saturday. We're going, to be determined yet with chief. But we thought it'd be, there's a lot of interest over there on the island. We thought it'd be nice to open up the station, do a three, four-hour open house where we can show people exactly what we're going to do with the station and some of the trucks that we're going to replace if the bond is passed. So I'll let everybody know when that is, and of course, everyone will be welcome. The DDA voted last week, Tuesday, to replace our electronic sign out in front of the hall. It needs some work and updating, software and electronics on it. But what they're going to do, they're going to replace the one out there with a nice cold, a color LED light with a new facade all around it that matches our building, and they're going to take the existing one, refurbish it, and put a nice structure around it and give it to the fire hall out in front there, so they'll have their own electronic sign in front of there. And it's, you know, it'd be good, everyone drive down that road for the high school and everything. And the DDA also approved to go ahead with eight-foot-wide sidewalk slash bike path from Fruit, along Fruit Road, and it's going to go from Island Drive down to Nook. It's going to be eight-foot-wide asphalt, and they gave me the directive to go ahead and start the engineering and acquiring easements, if there's any easements to be had for the sidewalk. And offshoot of that, this last Friday night, I was invited to speak to the Boy Scouts Troop 252, and which I did. It was very good. And I don't know if you recall, I had to, they wanted me to tell them about what's involved in being a good citizen and their constitutional duties of a citizen. But I don't know if you guys recall, about six months ago, they were at one of our board meetings, and what did they say? They said, "We want sidewalks, and we want one on Fruit Road." And so I tied it in, and it's true. They were at our meeting, and they said, or they told the board, "We'd like to see a sidewalk." And it was so great to tell them, "Well, you know what? It was just approved two or three nights before that, and it was from your idea." And they got all big smiles, and I think we should name that Troop 252 Sidewalk after them, or kind of recognize them for that, because, you know, they got the ball rolling on that project. So I thought that was way cool. We did our plant tour of the Elginac Water Plant today, and also, we, he didn't hit on too much, but there's a group through Semcog put together, it's called the Here and To Erie Water Corridor. And basically, it's involved all the drinking water plants from the mouth of the St. Clair River, or the top of the St. Clair River, the mouth, all the way down to Lake Erie. And we're, we did have some monitoring systems in place. Semcog got really involved, and I remember it cost $14,000 per station to put it in, and then we were monitoring it, and we still have it going on this station, but, or this plant, but other plants actually pulled theirs out. I know St. Clair did. I believe Marine City did. And, but they're getting that program fired up again, and we're going to be putting new modules in, and all the water plants. And what it does, if there's a spill or something in the river, it should detect it, and so, and alarms go off to all the water plants in this area. So if something hits Marysville, our plant will be notified, and we'll be able to shut down from taking in water until whatever it is goes past us. It's, I mean, this program only really, it costs $5,000 a year, and you spread that over, how many people this water plant services? It's like, I don't know, 60 cents per person per year. I mean, you just do it, you know? Makes sense to make sure we have clean water. But we wanted to mention that to everybody. There's been a couple of meetings on that, and we have one next week. And I did meet with AT&amp;T regarding small cell towers. I'm going to have to do a little bit of work on this. They, what these are, they're basically 18 to 24-inch-high antennas, and they install them 30, 35 feet high off of like existing DTE poles. They can do it on structures or anything else. And they're looking at doing eight of them on Harson's Island along South Channel Drive. They're going to put one, maybe two, in Elginac, and then they'll want more north, north part of Clay, but they haven't gotten those yet. And basically, they, we have to have an agreement from us allowing them to do this in our road right away. And we're the first ones in the county they've talked to. I've requested from MTA what other people or municipalities have charged them. Some are pretty expensive, others are pretty cheap. So I'm going to do some research, see what the best deal is for Clay. And also, there is a House bill of standardizing these small cell towers, what's being generated for income through the whole state, but that's still not approved yet. I have those numbers coming to us. This contract would supersede anything that the House does pass, or Lansing does pass for the life of the contract. But it's going to take a little bit of work, and we'll get granular on exactly where they're going to go, what poles, and that type of thing. And what it basically is for, is the next generation in cell, cell technology. I think we're at 4G now. There's actually going to be a 5G coming out. And also, on this network will be automated cars, so how the cars can talk to each other will also be carried on this network. It's a little bit Big Brother-ish. Yeah, it's coming. So we got to, we got to think about it and make sure it's done right, so. Just want to mention that. It was, it was an interesting meeting. I probably met with them a couple hours, so. FEMA's rearing their ugly head again. I did talk to them a little bit today, and actually, we do have this, a big workshop a month from today. And I have a link that I can email out to everybody. I'll put it out on our website and social media on their new proposed floodplain maps. And what they are doing, they're taking into account windblown water, and which it isn't significant. That's kind of it back there. I know they tweaked it, but the yellow part is windblown water. And they take into account the type of seawall they have, if it's a beach, if it's a soft shore, you know, quite a bit of things. And the good news is, they reduced the whole map of what's in the floodplain. And I asked them questions. I need to know how many structures are, that are now in the floodplain zone that are going to be removed, and how many structures are being involved in this new windblown, I think they call it velocity zone. And I know there's about 1,200 homes that's being removed from our floodplain zone, so.
Good.
Anybody who knows me, I just hate the whole thing, and we don't get, it's a money grab, but yeah, there'll be more of that, more coming on that in the next month. Music in the park, June 21st in Elginac. We have Mystic Six, that's Thursday. July 5, we have Mickey Meldrum and the Meldrum Brothers. Then, we started doing things on Wednesday also. June 20, we have a magic guy coming, Magical Andy Merk, is it? Marker?
McCord.
McCord. And July 11, we have Guy Lewis and the Chattanooga Express. So good, fun stuff going on there. And we have all kinds of programs going on, rec programs, actually now, there's too many to list. If you're on Facebook, like, if you like Clay Township Parks and Rec Facebook page, they're all listed on there, so. That's all I got today. We made it through.
Not bad.
All right, new business. First thing on the agenda is our proposal for our property liability insurance renewal with Nickel and Saff. And I believe Steve's here. Do I do a quick rundown, Steve, and if we have any questions? Thanks for coming out.
Good evening. Steve Saff Jr. with Nickel and Saff Insurance. Hopefully, you have in front of you a couple of documents. Number one, a letter from our office dated June 1, which gives a overview of the intended proposal. And then, I don't know if Supervisor Bryson's communicated to you that during the course of drilling down, after presenting the numbers, found an error in the insurance company and saved you another $5,000, so.
I didn't do that one. I thought I'd let you.
Oh, okay. We presented the proposal, the insurance company gives us the numbers, and then Mr. Bryson came back and said, "I need you to break this down by department." So they sent me this stack of paperwork that is such a joy to go through, and I couldn't get the numbers to match up. So finally discovered that they had, instead of 31 autos, they covered too many autos. They weren't taking autos off that were being removed from the fleet. So we discovered that. So instead of a, the 111,900, you're at $5,684 less, which is $106,216. So we are now a premium of $906 less than yet last year, or a 0.85% reduction. Within the proposal, there is a narrative from the insurance company Trident. What we are affording here are your commercial property and casualty coverages. We're insuring for terrorism coverage. We've included that. After the events of 9/11, our country adopted a program similar that exists in Great Britain where the English were worried about the Irish blowing buildings up. Their insurance companies don't like to pay claims any more than ours do, so they went to Parliament and asked for a backstop in case of a catastrophic incident, and it became nothing more than a tax on the insurance. Within your policy, there's a fee of $1,0378 that goes directly to the feds for catastrophic claims. Now, in Washington, they've amended the legislation a couple times. It was first written in 2002. It was strictly foreign terrorist acts. Now, they've just defined it as a terrorist act. So, for example, the Federal Monroe Building in Oklahoma City a number of years ago, that was a domestic terrorist act. So if something like that happens, this is now part of the coverage, unfortunately. We live in an era that we have to do that.
We do have those pesty Canadians.
There you go. Yeah, yeah. We're providing coverage for general liability, which includes the fire department and the, any coverage related to emergency medical services they afford. We're providing coverage for your fleet, including physical damage, comprehensive and collision, with replacement costs on the high-end fire department vehicles for stated values. Public officials, wrongful acts, or allegations of wrongful acts, or lack of action that those of you that are elected or appointed officials may or may not make. We also include inverse condemnation, so if there's an allegation of taking, you've got a private property owner that has a number of acres, and he's going to sell it to a developer, and the developer comes in and says, "I've got 20 acres here, and I want to build 10 beautiful homes." And your planning department looks at this and says, "You know, this is a great plan, but we don't want that density there. We only want to have seven homes." And the guy gets upset, and he sues you because you've taken value of his land. So we have coverage sublimated for that, which is something that's rather unique with insurance carriers. Employment practices, wrongful termination, discrimination, harassment, we have coverage for that. Law enforcement, the separate freestanding coverage for the actions of your police department. Within the cover letter, I made reference to the second from last paragraph, the hot coverage right now is cyber liability. The insurance industry has taken a position where they've created distinct and separate coverage. So what that means for you as a consumer is anything that you've traditionally purchased doesn't cover cyber liability. So they've created a separate form, and the form is like pollution liability in that it provides two kinds of coverages. It protects you for expenses that you incur if somebody hacks your systems or takes data from you, so you have to have internal expenses to create or to correct the problem, but then it also has coverage in case a third party comes to you and says, "Hey, you had my information in your care, custody, and control. You didn't protect it properly. It got in the hands of a bad guy who hacked your system. Now I have expenses." So it's the first-party expenses to help you correct the problem, and then there's third-party expenses if someone comes against you for an outside attack and the fact that, or the allegation that the township didn't properly protect that personal identifying information of a party. My personal opinion, if you're using a third-party contractor, I recommend that maybe the supervisor and I sit down with that company to take a look at this first before you make a decision. There might be some decision after the fact where there'd be a recommendation from the people that do this for you day in and day out, but I don't think it's something that you need to pull the trigger on tonight.
Okay. And we do have a third party.
Yeah, that's, which is very common with most of my municipalities. Very, very few have in-house IT departments, and when you start talking to the third-party vendors, the people that are providing these services for the public, you begin to learn and understand what protections, what they're dealing with, what they're providing you as part of the package of services. So there becomes a greater sense of comfort and confidence in most cases that I've seen when talking to these third-party vendors. So I, what I suggest is if you, if you wouldn't mind, I'd be happy to sit down, and we can kick the can with those folks and see what they, what they feel about it.
That's great.
Yeah, excuse me.
Yes.
Would that cover ransom?
Ransomware, yeah. It picks up. It picks up, if you bear with me a moment.
I thought you were worried about if I got kidnapped.
I don't want it to happen again.
Back to those Canadians again.
Gladly pay up to $2.
Fifty cents.
Canadian.
Malware, forensic review, legal review, public relations, regulatory fines, data compromise, network security, cyber extortion, cyber attack.
I think extortion would cover it.
Yeah. So they have those particular coverages included with this program. The one thing to keep in mind in this is that there is a sublimate of $100,000 for these coverages. It's an evolving area right now. I'm finding that insurance companies are, you know, it's kind of interesting when an insurance company picks up you and says, "Hey, what's the other guy doing on this right now?" So they're all, it's all kind of evolving coverage forms and prices. But again, I think that it would make sense to print off a copy of the detailed form, sit down with your guys, and just, again, review it with them, and then maybe come back at a later date. Certainly if something that you decided you wanted to secure, we could do it midterm. You're not bound by the renewal date of July 1st. We could do it at a later time.
Did you say that was a $100,000 cap?
Yes. Yeah. Higher limits are available, but it's, in my opinion, cost prohibitive.
Everybody have any more questions for Steve?
Thank you.
We've been with Nickel and Saff, what, third year now?
This is our.
Fourth.
This is our fourth year. Yeah, so we're just closing on our third year.
And I think, right now, our premium is what we were paying before we switched to them four years ago.
Good thing I found that mistake.
Yeah. So, I think four years ago, we were paying about $115,000, $118,000 a year.
And, you know, and that's a function of a variety of factors. I think the market for everything that we've seen, as far as name storms in Florida and all the headaches they've had in California, the industry still has remained very competitive. You know, you listen to the gurus, and I was a little bit concerned about what we thought we might be seeing for pricing, as far as potential increases. But in the past, you know, they were always waiting for the first guy to come out with a rate increase, and then they lined up right behind him. You know, these, this industry is so connected and so tight. You know, these guys know, you know, five minutes after the other guy does, and they're waiting to play a card after that other guy does. All this stuff about actuaries and all this detail has a lot to do with it, but at the end of the day, it's an intuitive industry, and people, these carriers are coming out with a price at the end of the day that they know that they can deal with. And would they like to get more? Certainly. And, but they're waiting for the other guy to drop the shoe, so.
Kind of like a gas station, I would thought.
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, yeah. You know, when I started with my father, there were probably about eight different carriers that we worked with that specialized in public entities, and now there's about three. So it's, and, you know, they all, they all know what the other ones, what's up. All right?
Yeah, great.
Well, thank you for making me number one on the list, and I hope you got Roscoe the Clown coming back again.
Okay, yes. Steve was always our sponsor for Roscoe the Clown.
Roscoe is, I'm the chairman of our DDA at Mount Clemens, and we beat up Roscoe all the time. So if I can get him an event, I'm happy to do that for him, so.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, entertaining motion, the premium is 106,216.
I'll make a motion to approve the proposal for property and liability insurance renewal from Nickel and Saff in the amount of $106,216. Support.
Okay, motion and support. Any more discussion? Hearing none. Roll call vote, please.
Kristi Hilton?
Yes.
Artie Bryson?
Yes.
Cindy Valentine?
Yes.
Joanne Shirkey?
Yes.
Mark Bouchard?
Yes.
Sandy Kufel?
Yes.
Crystal Regan?
Yes.
Okay, motion passes. Next, we have our, yep, thank you, Steve, thanks for coming out. We have our agreement, that's the tentative agreement so far with Clay Township and Michigan Association of Firefighters. We've been at this for over a year. I believe it's a good contract. It's a fair contract. It, and it's before us right now to pass it, if that's the board's pleasure.
I'll make a motion to approve the Michigan Association of Firefighters tentative agreement as ratified on June 7th contract.
Support.
Yeah, motion and support. Any discussion or questions? Hearing none. What's that? I'm okay with it. Okay. Hearing none. Roll call vote, please.
Artie Bryson?
Yes.
Cindy Valentine?
Yes.
Joanne Shirkey?
Yes.
Mark Bouchard?
Yes.
Sandy Kufel?
Yes.
Crystal Regan?
Yes.
Kristi Hilton?
Yes.
Okay, passes. Next, we have Resolution 2018-22, approve the 2018-19 fiscal budget for Clay Township.
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 2018-22, setting the 2018-19 Clay Township annual budget.
Support.
Okay, motion and support. Any discussion?
I know that we were waiting on some numbers, and things change. I'll just make a movement and some conscious effort to delay our next budget year's workshop until we have some solid numbers. It's just a lot of information for a trustee like me who has other obligations to process in the matter of.
Sure, I mean, we can do that.
Four days. It's just a lot. It's just, it's almost too much. It's overwhelming amount of material.
It is, and I'll even tell you, right, we still don't have all our budget, our numbers. I still don't have the work orders for the roads. I mean, you guess on some stuff.
I get it.
But, you know, it's, there's a lot of forecasting involved, but. Okay, motion and support. Any more discussion? Hearing none. Roll call vote?
Joanne Shirkey?
Yes.
Mark Bouchard?
Yes.
Sandy Kufel?
Yes.
Crystal Regan?
Yes.
Kristi Hilton?
Yes.
Artie Bryson?
Yes.
Cindy Valentine?
Yes.
All right, next, we have Resolution 2018-23, supervisor's salary.
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 2018-23, supervisor's salary of the office.
Support.
Okay, motion and support. Any discussion?
So we're raising the base salary of $40,000 to $42,000.
Yep.
Which is about a 5% increase for that base, just so that the people in TB land know.
Okay, any more discussion? Hearing none. Roll call vote, please.
Mark Bouchard?
Yes.
Sandy Kufel?
Yes.
Crystal Regan?
Yes.
Kristi Hilton?
Yes.
Artie Bryson?
Yes.
Cindy Valentine?
Yes.
Joanne Shirkey?
Yes.
Okay, we have Motion 2018-24, clerk's salary. Anticipating motion.
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 2018-24, clerk's salary.
Support.
Okay, motion and support. Any discussion?
I have just some clarification that I would like to know about, and maybe a discussion. But there's two parts to this resolution. One that involves raising the $40,000 to $42,000 per annum for the clerk. And then there's another one that is to provide a stipend payment of $500 per required election held, this to be paid to the clerk. And I don't quite understand that, because the election is part of the statutory duties. And raising the $40,000 to $42,000 goes to the statutory duty, so I, I'm a little confused with that.
Well, the reason why I broke it out of there is because typically, we have two elections every other year. The last three years, the clerk's office has been hit with three elections a year, which is not just the election day, but the Saturdays before the election. Theoretically, next year, we should have no elections. But the last three years, with the schools running the village, basically, it's just a buffer for the clerk, whether it be me or anybody else. When you get in those cycles where you can have up to four elections a year, which is a lot of work, and it takes away from doing everything else you're doing, puts in a lot more hours of overtime. Obviously, the office of the clerk doesn't get any overtime, but I still have to work those hours. So, and discussing it on an MTA board, some of the clerks have done this and recommended breaking out election from the rest of the salary of the office, being as it's not something that is done specifically to a year, for a year. Some years, there's none.
Which, which is why I'm questioning or wanting a clarification on it, that's all.
I understand.
Yeah.
Any more discussion?
Yeah, I think that something has to be, I'd like to see an underlying number of elections that come with the statutory duty. So if we could have a discussion on if that's zero a year, if that's one a year, if that's two a year, because I can see both sides of this deal. So I see that our elections are a lot of work, yeah. Yeah, you bet. Do I want to run them? No. No, I'm not that guy. I'm not. However, that being said, if we set the bar at one, one election a year, and that's the statutory, now, anything after one election, you know, I'd support the additional stipend to, I'm not a big stipend guy anyway, so I want to get that on the table. Okay? I don't like the stipends. I think it confuses me and a whole lot of other people. But, that being said, I think there's part of the statutory duty that requires our clerk to run an election. Does it require her to run three elections at the same rate? Nah, I don't know. I don't think so. I think that validates something, some kind of a stipend, some kind of a supplement, something. So where that middle ground is, is what I'd like to discuss. What's fair? What's appropriate? You know, and those are long days. I get it. They're, you know, 14, 16, 18-hour days for the clerk and some staff people, and it's a lot to hold together. I just don't know in my mind maybe where the middle ground is.
Well, as far as the number of elections, you can have four a year. Any, like, schools, or county, or state, anyone can petition for an election.
Okay.
There's a, but this year, we know we have an August one for the primary, and a November one for the gubernatorial election. I doubt if there'll be a May one, because, you know, those are typically schools.
Yep. And so, we know we're gonna have two this coming year.
Which is a statutory duty.
Well, this was in the resolution for the statutory duties, excuse me, duties of the office.
So am I, am I on the right track? Does anybody follow my logic there?
Well, there's just no way to predict how many elections, and that's my whole point. I mean, sometimes, some years, there are no elections. Some years, there's four elections.
I get it. I get it. And on those years that our clerk has to work four elections, I want the clerk to be compensated with something for that. I get it. I want that to happen, because I know that's a lot of work. But on the years that there's one election, in my mind, that's part of our clerk's duty. So, I mean, I would even propose something as low as one a year. That we require our clerk to run one a year as part of their statutory, we have to set precedent here.
Well, the statutory is to run all elections.
I understand that.
Yes.
I'm trying to work with our clerk and future clerks, because I do understand the process.
But see, that's a state law. Then we don't have anything to do with running the elections. The state decides whether we have.
That's what this does, is per.
Elections.
Yeah.
You know, we can't just say, well, we'll have one election a year.
I understand that part. I get it. I get it. I just, I know what we spend in elections. I know what we've approved as a board on special equipment. I know some of the things that we've done. We haven't left the elections department out in the cold.
Right.
We haven't turned our backs to it or the process. I would just like to, you know, in my mind, it's one. I could support anything after one election. I could, in my mind, certainly justify some of the extra work, but that's me.
So would you, how would you change that, be it resolved that the Clay Township Board shall provide a stipend payment of $500 per required election?
It's per election. If there's no election, it's no money.
There's no money.
I get it.
Okay.
I get it. So we just have to set the bar at we require one, and anything after one.
So you're proposing it say something. And I also have the same thing in for the deputy clerk, which I've calculated her current wage.
Yeah.
You know, versus overtime she gets paid for all those hours.
Yep.
So it comes out to within $20 of that this year. She gets a raise next year.
I get it.
So that's just the overtime hours that she puts in outside of election day, just in overtime for each election.
And she's a union employee, right?
Yes.
But I'm saying, that's not her running the election, or the hours that I have to put in for the election. That's just the hours that she works in overtime outside of, during the day here. During the day here, she does some of the election stuff, obviously with her union pay as part of her duties.
I know that it sort of ties into this, but I want to tackle that issue separately.
Yes. Yeah, that's a different ballgame there, yeah.
Those the statutory duties as written describe any amount of hours to be put in for elections?
Nope.
So what is?
Well, somewhat, you're required to be open on a couple Saturdays.
You open the Saturday before the election, and you have to take everything to the county at the end of election night.
Right.
So when I close down at 11:30, 12 o'clock, I still have to drive all the way up to Port Huron to drop off all my election paperwork and drive back.
But didn't they give you special permission to take it in the morning now, this time?
Only when it's just a school election.
Just a school election.
And then I have to be there by 8:00 AM. So, might as well take it the night.
Well, I don't have a problem with that stipend, as far as the elections are concerned. Okay. Well, we can vote on it as it stands. This is our time to discuss.
Yep.
And then the next year, we won't have any.
Right.
Right.
Probably.
And how this is, it's a $500 stipend per election, so if there's no elections, there's no $500 stipends.
Correct. But there is motion and support on that, so we have to do something with that first.
Will you have motion and support? Any more discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Sandy Kufel?
Yes.
Crystal Regan?
Yes.
Kristi Hilton?
Yes.
Artie Bryson?
Yes.
Cindy Valentine?
Yes.
Joanne Shirkey?
Yes.
Mark Bouchard?
Yes.
Okay, motion passes. All right, next, we have Resolution 2018-25, treasurer's salary.
I'll make a motion that we approve Resolution 2018-25, to set the annual salary of the township treasurer.
Do we have support?
Support.
Do we have motion and support? Any discussion? Again, this is set 42. Roll call vote, please.
Crystal Regan?
Yes.
Kristi Hilton?
Yes.
Artie Bryson?
Yes.
Cindy Valentine?
Yes.
Joanne Shirkey?
Yes.
Mark Bouchard?
Yes.
Sandy Kufel?
Yes.
Okay, motion carries. Next, we have, let's see, 2018-26, approve the trustee salaries.
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 2018-26, to set the annual salary of the township trustees.
Yes.
Sandy Kufal.
Yes.
Crystal Regan.
Yes.
Okay, moving right along. We have Resolution 2018-27, Approve the Deputy Stipends.
Make a motion to approve Resolution 2018-26 to set the annual salary of the township trustees.
A motion, do we have support? Support. Any discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote, please.
Kristy Hilton.
Yes.
Artie Bryson.
Yes.
Cindy Valentine, yes.
Yes.
Mark Bouchard.
Yes.
Sandy Kufal.
Yes.
Crystal Regan.
Yes.
Kristy Hilton.
Yes.
Artie Bryson.
Yes.
Cindy Valentine, yes.
Yes.
Sandy Kufal.
Yes.
Crystal Regan.
Yes.
Kristy Hilton.
Yes.
Artie Bryson.
Yes.
Cindy Valentine, yes.
Yes.
Sandy Kufal.
Yes.
Crystal Regan.
Yes.
Kristy Hilton.
Yes.
Artie Bryson.
Yes.
Cindy Valentine, yes.
Yes.
Kristy Hilton.
Yes.
Okay, motion passes. All right, next, we have Resolution 2018-27, Approve the Deputy Stipends.
Make a motion to approve Resolution 2018-27 to set the annual salary of the township treasurer.
Do we have support?
Support.
Do we have motion and support? Any discussion? Again, this is set 42. Roll call vote, please.
Crystal Regan.
Yes.
Kristy Hilton.
Yes.
Artie Bryson.
Yes.
Cindy Valentine, yes.
Yes.
Mark Bouchard.
Yes.
Sandy Kufal.
Yes.
Crystal Regan.
Yes.
Kristy Hilton.
Yes.
Artie Bryson.
Yes.
Cindy Valentine, yes.
Yes.
Mark Bouchard.
Yes.
Sandy Kufal.
Yes.
Crystal Regan.
Yes.
Kristy Hilton.
No.
Okay, motion passes. We have 2018-28, Approve the Stipends for Park and Rec Coordinator. Entertaining motion.
Make a motion to approve Resolution 2018-28 to set the annual Parks and Rec Coordinator stipend.
Support. Okay, we have motion and support, and this is just like all the others, deputies, from $3,200 to $3,264, so $64 a year raise. Any discussion? Any more discussion?
When you say it was just like all the other deputies, is that percentage-driven?
Yes.
Figure?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any more discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote, please.
Artie Bryson.
Sure, yes.
Cindy Valentine, yes. Joanne Shirkey.
Yes.
Mark Bouchard.
Yes.
Sandy Kufal.
Yes.
Crystal Regan.
Yes.
Kristy Hilton.
Yes.
Artie Bryson.
Yes.
Cindy Valentine, yes.
Yes.
Mark Bouchard.
Yes.
Sandy Kufal.
Yes.
Crystal Regan.
Yes.
Kristy Hilton.
No.
Okay, motion passes. We have 2018-28, Approve the Stipends for Park and Rec Coordinator. Entertaining motion.
Make a motion to approve Resolution 2018-28 to set the annual Parks and Rec Coordinator stipend.
Support. Okay, we have motion and support, and this is just like all the others, deputies, from $3,200 to $3,264, so $64 a year raise. Any discussion? Any more discussion?
When you say it was just like all the other deputies, is that percentage-driven?
Yes.
Figure?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any more discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote, please.
Joanne Shirkey.
Yes.
Mark Bouchard.
Yes.
Sandy Kufal.
Yes.
Crystal Regan.
Yes.
Kristy Hilton.
Yes.
Artie Bryson.
Yes.
Cindy Valentine, yes.
Yes.
Mark Bouchard.
Yes.
Sandy Kufal.
Yes.
Crystal Regan.
Yes.
Kristy Hilton.
Yes.
Artie Bryson.
Yes.
Cindy Valentine, yes.
Yes.
Mark Bouchard.
Yes.
Okay, motion passes. Next, we have Appointment and Contract for our soon-to-be new assessor, Sherry Lawton, effective 7/1/2018.
Make a motion to approve the Appointment and the Contract for Sherry Lawton, as an assessor, but we haven't had that official yet.
Support. Yeah, motion and support. Any discussion? I'd just like to say that I have all the confidence in the world that Sherry's going to do a good job, and she's got big shoes to fill, but I'm sure she'll, yes, I have, yeah, I'm, no worries on me.
And she had a good teacher.
She had a good teacher.
Plus a lot of school, school learning, a lot of school learning, yeah.
Okay, any more discussion?
Is this a one-year contract? It is, because all of the township contracts are up next year.
So we'll do them all at that point. Roll call vote, please.
Sandy Kufal.
Yes.
Crystal Regan.
Yes.
Kristy Hilton.
Yes.
Artie Bryson.
Yes.
Cindy Valentine, yes.
Yes.
Mark Bouchard.
Yes.
Sandy Kufal.
Yes.
Crystal Regan.
Yes.
Kristy Hilton.
Yes.
Artie Bryson.
Yes.
Cindy Valentine, yes.
Yes.
Mark Bouchard.
Yes.
Sandy Kufal.
Yes.
Crystal Regan.
Yes.
Kristy Hilton.
Yes.
Artie Bryson.
Yes.
Cindy Valentine, yes.
Yes.
Mark Bouchard.
Yes.
Sandy Kufal.
Yes.
Crystal Regan.
Yes.
Kristy Hilton.
Yes.
Artie Bryson.
Yes.
Cindy Valentine, yes.
Yes.
Mark Bouchard.
Yes.
Okay, motion passes. Next, we have Appointment and Contract for our soon-to-be new assessor, Sherri Lawton, effective 7/1/2018.
Make a motion to approve the Appointment and the Contract for Sherri Lawton, as an assessor, but we haven't had that official yet.
Support. Yeah, motion and support. Any discussion? I'd just like to say that I have all the confidence in the world that Sherri's going to do a good job, and she's got big shoes to fill, but I'm sure she'll, yes, I have, yeah, I'm, no worries on me.
And she had a good teacher.
She had a good teacher.
Plus a lot of school, school learning, a lot of school learning, yeah.
Okay, any more discussion?
Is this a one-year contract? It is, because all of the township contracts are up next year.
So we'll do them all at that point. Roll call vote, please.
Sandy Kufal.
Yes.
Crystal Regan.
Yes.
Kristy Hilton.
Yes.
Artie Bryson.
Yes.
Cindy Valentine, yes.
Yes.
Mark Bouchard.
Yes.
Sandy Kufal.
Yes.
Crystal Regan.
Yes.
Kristy Hilton.
Yes.
Artie Bryson.
Yes.
Cindy Valentine, yes.
Yes.
Mark Bouchard.
Yes.
Okay, motion passes. Next, we have Contract for Chief Rose as our fire chief and fire official.
I'll make a motion to approve the fire chief clay township contract, i.e. George Rose.
Support.
Motion and support. Any discussion? This has hands full, but he's doing a good job.
This is a one-year also.
One year.
Yeah.
Okay, no more discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Artie Bryson.
Yes.
Cindy Valentine, yes.
Yes.
Mark Bouchard.
Yes.
Sandy Kufal.
Yes.
Crystal Regan.
Yes.
Kristy Hilton.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Next, we have Purchase of Badges for the Fire Department and Uniforms. We didn't put anything in here, do you have anything for us, George? Yeah, come on up. What it was, he's got a lot of room in this year's budget.
Okay.
And so we'd rather spend the money on this year's budget instead of going forward and take away, George.
Before you do, George, I just want to point out, this is part of the requirements from the contract that we just passed.
Yes.
Okay.
So.
For uniforms and the uniforms clothing allowance.
And this is a pair of pants, a duty shirt, a duty, or I should say, a pair of pants, a duty shirt, a, trying to think of the...
Work shirt.
Work shirt, and a t-shirt. And we're looking at around $184 per firefighter.
So is that just for the uniform part, or what about the badges?
That's just for the uniform part. And then the badge is about 125 for the badge and a nameplate, because we have to provide them also with a nameplate for their uniform.
Times how many, chief?
That would be about 30 right now. So we're looking at about $3,750 for badges, and then the uniforms would be about $5520.
And badges, I assume, can be used year after year, after year?
Yes, and as they resign or they quit, we can reissue them to...
And the uniforms, though, that would be on an annual expense?
Or as they wear out, I would think.
Yeah, as needed.
Yeah, we have to provide them, but, you know, it's not a yearly thing. If they still have them, and they're in good shape, we don't have to replace them.
If they get tore or ripped or something, then we could replace, or wore out, then we could replace them.
Okay.
So the two, the badges and the uniforms would be close to $10,000 for both of them?
Yes.
So you just say we...
Not to exceed?
Not to exceed $10,000 for the badges and the uniforms. And then that way, we got a little leeway.
Is that a motion?
It's a motion, yes.
Support.
Okay, we have motion and support to purchase badges and uniforms for the Fire Department not to exceed $10,000. Do we have any more discussion or questions?
Do we have, do we have specific uniform requirements and specialized VDU pants, and they come from this manufacturer, and they're this color, and...
Yes, we're going to go through one company, and so we're uniformed, so we don't get them from different.
Fantastic.
So that's what our plan is.
Great.
Very professional.
Yeah.
Do we do our new badge yet?
Working on that.
All right, we have motion and support. Any more discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Joanne Shirkey.
Yes.
Mark Bouchard.
Yes.
Sandy Kufal.
Yes.
Crystal Regan.
Yes.
Kristy Hilton.
Yes.
Artie Bryson.
Yes.
Cindy Valentine, yes.
Okay, motion passes. Next, we have Fire Department Hose and Ground Ladder Testing. That will be on next year's budget.
Make a motion to approve the hose and ground ladder testing for $4,749.50 for 2018-19 budget.
Report.
An annual deal, chief?
Yes, sir.
About, always about the same price?
Yep. It hasn't changed from last year. Hopefully, it'll go down once we start liquidating some of our vehicles.
Now, you're going to make a requirement for your team members to show up and assist on that? That's a big deal, isn't it?
Well, we have a company that comes in a dozen.
They'll do it for us. They'll do it for us?
Yep.
Is that when they shut down the scrap run last year?
Yeah. They'll come in, and they'll do the hose testing and the ladder testing all in the same day. And then at the end, we'll get a certificate stating that it's been tested and meets NFPA requirements.
Great.
So to buy the equipment and do that in-house, you're probably looking at, what, $30,000, $40,000, or?
Close to that. And then the time to do it.
Yeah, the time to do it.
Yep.
And then cert, and then have it certified.
Right.
Yeah, like I say, they give us, they guarantee it for us.
It's a third party, so you get somebody that comes in that certifies it other than us.
Okay.
Are we on item 16?
Yes, we skipped 15.
Yeah, I'll go back.
Okay.
What did we miss?
The helmets.
15. Good, good, Sandy.
Are we ready for a vote?
Yep. Any more questions? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Next, we have going backwards from 16 to 15 is the purchase of helmets and shields for a amount of $1,396.
Make a motion to purchase helmets and shields at the cost of $1,396.
Support.
A motion and support, any questions or discussions? Hearing none. All in favor, by signifying, by, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, chief. Next, we have Authorization of Fireworks at 3320 South Channel Drive for June 30th, 2018. I know chief went and talked to him, and we're all set there.
I just got a text or an email from him with his license and his application.
Okay.
And I spoke to him about the distances that spectators need to be away.
I believe last year, there was a storage issue. Is that taken care of?
Yes.
This is, I think, the third year we've done...
He always does it.
I was going to say, the annual event, isn't it?
Right. We've never had any issues, so...
I'll make a motion to approve fireworks at 3320 South Channel on June 30th with a back-up date of July 4th.
Support.
Okay, we have motion and support, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. I like fireworks. Resolution 2018-30, Authorizing a Special Assessment Bonds. This is for the County Water Project. If you recall, we had our council here last meeting, both our legal and our bonding council that went through it.
Make a motion to approve Resolution 2018-30, Authorizing Special Assessment Bonds.
Support.
A motion and support. Any discussion? A lot of it hinges on how the bids come back and which one we award as far as the actual costs. And, you know, that's dealt with in here. And also how we're going to do the bonds. We're going to make it so we can pay it off early because we think a lot of people are going to...
Pay that lump sum?
Yeah, pay a lump sum so we don't get stuck paying...
Interest on it.
Interest for 19 years when we're not collecting interest, so... We have motion and support, any more discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Mark Bouchard.
Yes.
Sandy Kufal.
Yes.
Crystal Regan.
Yes.
Kristi Hilton.
Yes.
Artie Bryson.
Yes.
Cindy Valentine, yes. Joanne Shirkey.
Yes.
Okay, motion passes. I think we had like, what are we, 32 on the whole thing? We're doing like a dozen of them tonight. All right, Lazy Lane Special Assessment, Resolution Number Four. Entertaining motion.
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution Number 2018-31 for Lazy Lane Special Assessment, Resolution Number Four.
Support.
A motion and support, any discussion? Hearing none. Roll call vote, please.
Joanne Shirkey.
Yes.
Mark Bouchard.
Yes.
Sandy Kufal.
Yes.
Crystal Regan.
Yes.
Kristi Hilton.
Yes.
Artie Bryson.
Yes.
Cindy Valentine, yes.
Okay. We have Resolution 2018-32, Adopting Ordinance Amendment Number 128-1 for Land Division. This more or less cleans up our ordinance to coincide with the State Land Division Act, am I right? We have five tweaks in language, and we had our attorney look at it, which her opinion's in here, and she was all for it. And so now it's before us.
I'd like to make a resolution that we approve. Resolution Number 2018-32, Adopting Ordinance Amendment Number 128-1 to Land Division Ordinance Number 128 of Clay Township.
Support.
Okay, we have motion and support.
I think you meant you wanted to make a motion, not make a resolution.
I'm sorry.
He said resol, okay.
I would like to make a motion. Thank, thank you for correcting him, Joanne. Thank you. To support Resolution 2018. Got a little ahead of myself.
That's easy.
Thanks, trustee.
Okay, we do have motion and support now?
Yes.
Any discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote, please.
Sandy Kufal.
Yes.